Need to order? A test of publication.
What's up, Paulson?
Thank you. Roll call. Jack is absent and Tina is absent. Approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second thought?
Motion made by Laurie, second by Shelley to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Shelley, would you read the district mission, vision, and values?
Bangor School District, mission, vision, and vision and value statements. Mission: Bangor Pride, a small school building big futures. Vision: An innovative, small school catering, creating excellence through personalized learning and relationships for all. Values: Student-centered, small class sizes, continuous improvement, professionalism, opportunities for all, safety, foster community, sustainability.
Thank you, Shelley. All right, public comment. So our public comment, each person will have three minutes, and for a total of 20 minutes. So after 20 minutes, then we will move on to the agenda. That is our board policy. The first person I have is Cadence. You want to come up to the mic, please? So, are we, and it's 7:01 is when we're starting?
When the pandemic began, the lack of knowledge about COVID-19 justified this behavior of wearing masks. This excuse is no longer valid. It became clear long ago that the virus is less dangerous to children than the common flu, and that keeping schools open poses minimal risk of spreading infection. Yet despite this evidence and despite the widespread availability of vaccines to teachers and adults and children, many schools have yet to reopen full-time and others are still making students miserable as possible by wearing masks, separating them from their classmates, and not allowing them playtime. Schools have canceled many sporting events and other extracurricular activities, isolated students, and forced them to wear masks in classrooms and on the playgrounds. Social distancing and masks hinder learning while harming children emotionally, socially, and physically, all for no purpose other than providing a false comfort for adults who ought to know better. Adults are supposed to ease children's fears and let them know that they are safe. Instead, we're frightening them into believing that they're stocked every day by invisible menaces lurking in the air. A year of mask-wearing will scar some of these psychologically and maybe even physically, according to a team of Italian professors who did a study. By hiding teachers' lips and muffling their speeches, mask-wearing makes it harder for young children to develop language skills, recognize emotions, and develop properly. It also prevents children with hearing impairments from lip reading. Unable to rely on facial cues, teachers and students of all ages are more likely to misinterpret one another, which is a giant problem for children, especially on the autism spectrum. How are children supposed to develop with social skills if they can't see one another's faces, sit together, or play together? Research from the University of Wittem Herdeck in Germany have catalogued other problems. Among 18,000 parents who chose to respond, more than half reported that the masks were giving their children headaches and making it difficult for them to concentrate. More than one-third side to other side effects, including reluctance to go to school, unhappiness, impaired learning, drowsiness, fatigue. The court in Germany ordered that schools end the mandates declaring that they damaged the mental and physical and spiritual well-being of their students. Now that the pandemic has eased and so many people have developed immunity from either vaccinations or infection, the risk to teachers and children in America is extremely low. It is time to take these masks off.
Thank you. TC?
First of all, I wanted to take a second for every one of you. Thank you for what you did in the last year. Got our kids through this. You don't always hear the positives, as we've seen. You always hear the negative, especially Mr. Johnson. It was great to actually see the smile on your face the last few days of school. The kids were, it was amazing to see that. So I'm here, I'm the father of Nora Allen. Sorry, I definitely want it to be my choice. Sorry, I'm not used to speaking on a mic thing. I had to do a teleprompter.
Well, that way people on Zoom can hear you.
I got you, I got you. So I want it to be my choice, my protection of the child. And I understand what you do in this school, you have the best interest of our children. You have the best interest of all of our children, our whole community. I do understand that. But as a parent, every adult has their opportunity to get vaccines. You can walk into Walmart, you can walk into Walgreens. So if you need that for your placebo effect, or if you need it because it actually works, however you truly believe, then that's your choice. But when it comes to my child, I want to be able to make that choice and make her comfortable. Teachers are on the front line, and they see exactly how these mandates and protocols are impacting kids on a daily basis. I'm reading this statement on behalf of a teacher who would like to remain anonymous. As an elementary school, elementary classroom teacher, I have seen firsthand the negative effects of COVID on our children over the past year, especially with regards masking and social distancing. The most concerning was the impact on their education. Masks made it hard for students to communicate, especially those with speech impairments. Masks also make it very challenging for students to learn phonics because they're, they were able, ah, sorry. They were unable to see the teacher's mouth moving to make their sounds better. And I've seen that there are other masks out there, if that is an option, to be able to see the lips move. There is those options if that comes to form. This is a huge part, this is a huge part of early reading. I believe we will, we will see speech and sound problems in the future due to masks. Not only did masks and social distancing affect children's education, but also their social skills. It is in our human nature to crave touch, closeness to others. It was devastating to watch two students be afraid to hug or touch a classmate due to these restrictions. In primary school, students are also taught how to communicate nonverbally. And this was very challenging because students were unable to read facial cues due to these masks. This made it hard for students to solve problems and maintain friendships. I witnessed school-wide the lack of community, lack of community between children as they resorted themselves, resorted themselves to themselves. Finally, the COVID restrictions of masks and social distancing negatively impact students' behavior. Many students struggle with the behavior management skills due to this past trauma. Masks made it harder for such students to trust adults, to communicate their feelings, and overall, another expectation that students had to follow. I saw an increase in negative behavior due to the stress and pressure that was put on students this year. Overall, students are resilient, but I saw this year that masks and social distancing negatively impacted children's ability to learn, make friends, and be kind in the school system. Students are already struggling academically and socially more than ever. So we cannot continue to have these regulations that hinder our children from learning such crucial skills in their future. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you, TC. Rachel?
I'm all about the visuals. So clearly governmental overreach gets me a little fired up, so I'll try to keep my composure this time for y'all. At the last board meeting, I discussed how there's data on the CDC website stating that clinical trials show that masks really were not effective. I also discussed CDC data that indicated 85% of those that contracted COVID confirmed to the CDC that they always wore masks. This is a small town and people talk, so I heard at the last board meeting, parents are not following the science. It's a little ironic, seeing the data presented was directly from the CDC's website. There was also talk that we, the parents, are only concerned about the last few days of school, which was obviously not the case. The past kept our kids masked for over a year. No, the parents are looking to the future, which is what all parents should be doing. I would like to address the comments around following the science. Did you know that the science is fatal for some and leaves others injured? VAERS, the Vaccine Adverse Reporting System, a report which is updated every Friday, and as of June 11, 2021, VAERS has reported 4,209 deaths and 326,239 adverse injuries due to the COVID vaccine. And this is only for the deaths and adverse events in the United States alone. The data printed for you, if you want to look at the last two pages, is from prior week's data. Pay attention to the numbers. In just one week, there was 261 deaths and an additional 52,703 adverse events. The first COVID vaccine given to someone in the U.S. was administered on December 14, 2020, only six short months ago. And we already have this many deaths and side effects, and these are only the deaths and adverse events that have been reported and approved by the CDC. It's concerning that they are pushing this to our children. The VAERS website shows each case file with the adverse event for each individual, which includes bleeding, an array of blood issues, Bell's palsy, sudden death, neurological issues, anaphylactic reactions, tremors, migraines, inflammation, which is the root of all disease, and the list goes on. They are just starting to give this to our children. Expect these numbers to increase. I encourage you to fact-check me by going to wonder.cdc.gov/VAERS.html. To make it easy for you, I took screenshots and a how-to guide to maneuver the site. A copy of this presentation has been sent to the school board members, or will be after this, and in your email addresses. And if anyone listening would like this data, please reach out to them. Following the science, the FDA and CDC are pushing a vaccine that's not approved. No one is held accountable for the deaths or adverse events, but it's safe for your child? In 1976, 45 million people were vaccinated for the swine flu. 53 people died as a result of the vaccine, and they brought an end to those vaccines because it was deemed too risky. You have to ask yourself, why is it okay now? I would like to remind you that unless you have a medical condition, if you are under 70 years of age, you have a 99% chance or better of surviving COVID. I think I'll take my chances. Even if a COVID vaccine is approved, that doesn't change these statistics. And if you think that a vaccine is going to save you, you have the freedom to make that choice, but it should be safe. It turns out that via the Freedom of Information Act, paper stuff. The medical liaison for the federal government lied about the effectiveness of masks. He lied about the Wuhan Institute's involvement in the leak of COVID, and he lied about the effectiveness of lifesaving measures with hydroxychloroquine. But somehow, we're supposed to believe his claims about safety and efficacy? Here are the effects of the science in black and white, or are these lives expendable for the sake of science? Children between the ages of zero and 19 have a 99.997% chance of survival, and that's without masks, that's without testing, and without vaccines. I wish I had those kinds of odds in life. For instance, I wish I was 99.997% certain that if I played lottery, I'd win. Or I wish I was 99.997% certain that everyone in this room, we're following our constitutional right for freedom of choice and not just a political agenda. Following the science is good to an extent, but all of these tools they are using are experimental. They have not withstood the test of time, and evidence from VAERS speaks volumes. We do not even know the effects of masks and vaccines with, will have on our children. Take a step in the right direction to stop this madness by making masks optional, not just for the summer, but the entire 2021, 22 school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Mandy?
Hi, my name's Mandy Young. I have two children that attend the elementary school here in Bangor. I want to talk today about the personal observations I've seen in my children and my children's friends this year after wearing masks, and urge you to make masks optional, not only for summer school, but beyond. When I asked my children, both five and 10, how they were feeling during the school day when they were wearing a mask all day, they both said things like, "I felt less focused," "I was tired," "I couldn't stay awake," "I was distracted," "I can't breathe." So first, I want to address the physical observations I've, I've seen. "Hard to breathe," as my kids would say, is the fact that my kids are active. They've always been very active kids. And to see a decreased lung capacity when they're trying to run around is disheartening. It's disheartening for them. They feel less confident in their abilities. I coached the fourth grade soccer, girls soccer team this year, and as I've done in the past. And to watch these girls that every other year can play a whole soccer game without feeling tired after three minutes, I timed it when we were playing games, three minutes, they're begging me to come out to have a mask break because they had to run around on the soccer field with a mask on in 90-degree heat some days, which was unacceptable in my book. Lastly, I want to talk about the emotional toll that has taken on them. My 10-year-old has been a focused, hard-working student, and this year, we noticed a decrease in her joy, social isolation. She wants to sit in her room. She doesn't want to be around people. Lack of focus. Well, she did maintain good grades and obviously doesn't get in trouble. She's a good student. But she was harder to get to focus. When you would ask her what was going on, how she was feeling, she would just state she's tired. She doesn't know. As a parent, it's hard to see your joyous children struggle in ways they never have before. I can't tell you the countless nights we've spent this year in tears because we don't feel ourselves, and we don't know how to handle it. Lastly, I'd like to address the sense of security masks were instilled in their heads. Safe from what? Because from the changes I saw in my own kids, the masks caused as much harm emotionally and physically. I could go on, but I'll end with urging you to please think about the silent suffering our kids went through this year because they don't want to disappoint their teachers, their role models. They look up to their teachers. They love their teachers. Please vote yes to optional masking for summer and beyond.
Thank you, Mandy. Stacy?
My name is Stacy Oakright, and you guys, I interviewed my nine-year-old son, Owen, who's in third grade, was. Because I wanted to share with you a student's perspective. You know, you're getting a lot of data thrown at you, and that's, you know, you guys have, you know the data. And as a parent, I didn't even know where my son's classroom was this year because I never set foot in school. I'm so emotional about this. Whoo, this one gets me, having interviewed my son. My conversations with my kids and their teachers were the closest thing that I had to an understanding of what my kids went through in school and what all of our kids went through in school this year. So I asked my son if he could walk me through a typical day from the time he dropped, got dropped off at school till the time he went home. And this is what he said, and I quote, my nine-year-old third grader. "At the beginning of the day, I'd be dropped off outside, and I'd walk into a different door than my little brother, than my little brother, who's in kindergarten. I would walk to my classroom where there are hooks and lockers, and each one has to be socially distanced because you can't be close to anyone. Then you go inside, and you have to get your temperature checked and use sanitizer, then you go to your desk, and you just start working. And it goes like that all day, just sitting in our desks with masks, doing math and stuff. We should get outside more. We only get one 15-minute recess a day. And in a usual school year, we would get three recesses, and each one was 15 minutes. So that's a big difference. We got a class walk, but we still had to wear a mask in distance. So snack and lunch are basically the only times that you get to take your mask off, and when you take your mask off, you can't talk. So most days, we are in our classroom, but one day a week, we got to eat in the multipurpose room because they say that if all the kids were in the lunchroom, it would not be good for our health or anything. So we eat in our classroom, and we have to watch a show. But if we start talking, we get counted. And at recess, you couldn't take your mask off, and when you come in back inside, you have to change your mask, and then you go home. So that's a lot of unusual things that shouldn't have to be happening. It's not how I wanted the school year to go. And I asked him if he could share how he felt wearing a mask and how it felt to have his teacher wearing a mask every day. And he said, "When I'm wearing a mask, it just makes me feel like I can't breathe and I can't concentrate a lot. And when my teacher has to wear a mask, it muffles her voice, and she has to wear a speaker sometimes, and she has to be away from us with her mask on, which she shouldn't have to have one." He gets it. And I asked him if there was any last thing he wanted to share, and he said, "It seemed like there were a lot of rules, even when you were outside." Basically, the whole time, we were trying to be normal kids and running around and playing, but you couldn't do that because you couldn't be close to each other. I was just like, why do we have to do that? One time at recess, I fell off the monkey bars, and I was laying on my back, and I was hurt. And my friend came up to me and he said, "Owen, I would help you, but I can't touch you or I'll get in trouble." You guys, let that sink in for a second. I will never forget that, and neither will he. Things that my son has heard this year are, "You can't help your friend, or you're going to get in trouble. You can't stand up at your desk without permission, or you'll get in trouble. You can't be too close to your friend, or you're going to get in trouble." He's nine years old. What message are we sending to our kids, you guys? What are we teaching them? So many kids have been programmed over the last year to live in fear. They've had to comply so they don't get in trouble, even when it's against what's right. How many of you would be okay dealing with what these kids have had to deal with every single day? I know I wouldn't. So the question really becomes, when is enough enough?
Thank you, Stacy. Jen, Jen McCartney? Thank you, Stacy. Jen, Jen McCartney? Oh, is Jen virtual?
I have not received. I have not, there was a Zoom requested, but I have not seen it on the Zoom.
Okay, so I have Turha Finn. Is there anyone on Zoom right now?
Nope. I did send them an invite.
Okay, and they're not on? All right, thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes from May nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, open session, page twelve.
I just noted one correction, and that was one nay vote on the president instead of a unanimous vote.
Yeah, it was marked a seven-zero, and I believe Jack, Jack voted no at that time.
Correct, it should be six to one.
I'll make a motion to approve based on that change.
Motion made by Lori, seconded by Joni, all in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Approval of May nineteenth, closed session, page fifteen.
I'll make a motion to approve the closed session, Ms.
Second.
Motion made by Shelley, seconded by Joni, all in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. All right, start with the vouchers.
Julie, I I didn't receive any questions, and Angie didn't say that she did either, so.
Thank you.
I will move to approve the vouchers.
Second.
Motion by Joni, seconded by Lisa, all in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carried. Fund twenty-one checks.
Again, no questions were received, Julie.
I'll make a motion to approve the fund twenty-one checks.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Lori, seconded by Shelley to approve the fund twenty-one checks, all in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Financial report.
So in your packet on page sixteen is the financial report. I'm just going to highlight just a few things. First of all, under receipts, number one, title two, a, that is our professional development that we received title two as a federal program that's run through the state of Wisconsin. So we received twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-eight cents for that. Under B, number two, summer food service program. It's truly not summer food, that's just the title. But again, the federal government and the Food Service Program provided free lunches for districts throughout the state, throughout the nation, and at a substantially higher reimbursement rate than previously, so for the period from May till the end of the school, and this is actually previous to that in a couple of months. Fifty thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-nine cents, so total revenue of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-seven cents. Total expenditures of nine hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixteen cents, balance on hand on June eleventh. Hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and forty cents, so any questions on that at all?
I'll make a motion to approve the financial report.
Second.
Motion by Shelley, seconded by Lori to approve the financial report, all in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. All right, so committee board, excuse me, board committee assignments. You have the new sheet there, page seventeen, with Paul's absence. I put Lisa in some places, moved around a little bit. So if you have any questions, let me know. I did not receive any emails from anyone regarding any preferences, so I left it pretty much as is. I just filled in Paul and moved a little bit. I moved myself around a little bit and stuck Lisa in, so if you have any questions, let me know. Policy committee meeting. I didn't bring my, Joni, I didn't bring my stuff.
Well, we met last Wednesday. As we all know, Neola is our board policy representation. Everything we reviewed was either required or highly recommended by our Neola rep. Most of what we've reviewed was revisions, however, there is two new policies that will require a first first reading. You know, we didn't make a lot of changes. We did tweak some out of what we felt was personal need towards our district, not necessarily. You know, these policies are written for the entire state, so not a lot of changes other than what was required or recommended by Neola. Miss anything?
Any questions for Joni, or I, or Dave?
And we'll be acting on those in a little bit, so.
All right, moving on. School nursery report. Tammy was unable to be here tonight. Dave, do you have anything you would like?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. First of all, we held a second shot covid clinic on June tenth from one to four P.M., and I talked to Tammy and very happy to report that a hundred percent of the students and the families that got the first shot in, I believe it was end of April, returned for their second shots because we were a little bit concerned because of the fact with school being out. And so, but it was a hundred percent return in terms of those students, those families getting their covid shots. And also the county who did the covid clinic allowed anybody that hadn't previously gotten vaccinated to come in, even if there was their first shot or their second shot, so there were some additional people that came in. Again, I want to thank the county because they did a very good job of running the covid clinics, so. And then the other thing in your packet on page eighteen is a information from Tammy. A little bit later on, we'll be talking about covid protocols and regarding shortened quarantines and for summer school. So that information's on on page eighteen. Obviously, Tammy is the one that when there is during summer school will handle these types of questions, and if there has to be any type of quarantine, so.
Any questions for Dave regarding Tammy's report? Okay, so um, next on the agenda is optional masking for students, staff, and visitors. And I believe on page nineteen is some of the documentation.
Yes, so on page nineteen is our recommendation that with the changing scenarios with covid and the more we know, we are looking at recommending, we are recommending to the board to do optional masking effective starting tomorrow through the end of summer school. Summer school starts on the twelfth and runs through July thirtieth. So these would be optional for staff, students, and visitors inside the building, as you're well aware, we, they've been optional outside for quite some time. So now the only caveat to that is there's still a federal order that requires that school buses, other forms of transportation, again, a federal order that requires masks on the bus, buses, so we would have to follow that mandate by the federal government. The other piece at the bottom of the page is, I think we all hope that covid will be in the back rearview mirror soon. But if there is a change down the road, and I know that we're going to talk, this is particular to summer school. And again, our hope is that when the school year starts, that there will be no masking and and possibly some changes to protocols that will be in place during summer school if you adopt those. So but that at the bottom, it just says if things change dramatically, that the district needs the flexibility to handle that. Now, I don't know if that would include if there was this explosion of variants or whatever, but that that is a flexibility that the board needs. So though at this point, we are recommending, starting tomorrow, that all students, staff, and visitors have optional masking. And I use the word optional again for those parents that don't want it. But then, on the other hand, the parents that do, that they still have the option of having their children wear masks.
Dave, I believe you and the other administrators and Tammy met with Tracy Worsing, our medical director.
Yes.
And she's in agreeance with us?
Yeah, so we met last Friday, Dr. Worsing, who works for Mayo Clinic, met with us, Tammy was there, and the admin team. And she felt that, given the current trends, current data, that this is a viable recommendation. Again, she is a believer that she says, but we need to continue to monitor, monitor the data and the trends going forward through the summer. And again, she would prefer, if you know Dr. Worsing, that not only during summer, but that we can start the year differently than we did last year, so.
Any questions from the board discussion?
I have a question. Just some of the some reading is the differences between fully vaccinated or not vaccinated students. How, yes, or activities or whatever's listed in here? I guess what is going to be the protocol as far as, like, how are we going to know who's vaccinated and not vaccinated?
Lisa, there are, there is a state registry that could be, and Tammy, again, will be in charge of looking at that, and so that is one way.
But that is separate from the masking.
Lisa, yours was question was coming from page eighteen, the quarantine page, or where were you? Right, yeah, right, Lisa? Yeah, okay.
And again, Lisa, I'm at the next meeting, Tammy, you know, again, can answer more fully those those questions because of her medical expertise on the, on that.
Really, the quarantine days have shortened.
Yes.
And that's my understanding from the medical.
Currently, it's still, and is, if you read through Tammy's information there, the CDC still recommends the best thing to follow is the fourteen-day quarantine. But again, it would be the option in our district, again, we'll talk about shortened quarantines a little bit later, is that if a person goes in on days five or six and comes back with a negative diagnostic covid test, they could return within seven days. The other thing would be a ten-day that they are not showing symptoms so they could come back if they don't go in and get the test at ten days. Previously, we followed the fourteen days.
Okay, any, thank you. Any questions about the masking, optional mask wearing for students, staff, and visitors effective June seventeenth?
Julie, one other thing, if you look on page twenty-one, I put a spreadsheet together of area schools. And when I say area schools, it's the scenic bluffs conference and also Holman, Alaskan, West Salem. And I asked them three questions, and first of all, they looked at, I asked about masks for summer school. And all of those schools, as you can see, had optional mask for summer school. Quarantine, you can see a little bit of variance. Some are going with the seven days, some are going with ten days. I didn't get information back from Holman, Alaska, or West Salem on that. The other piece is that this information is particular to summer school. In talking to those districts, they will make the decision on, at their July board meeting regarding the start of the school year in terms of covid protocols and everything, so again, they just taking into account that the variant, but July twentieth, July meeting is is when they will make the decision to. You're right. She also was in favor of that because, again, she keeps saying the words over, watch the data, watch the trends. And hopefully, there will continue like they are now, and that, and that would be good news come July twenty-first, when I should say that will be. For those of you that don't know, this is David Brokaw. He is our new superintendent starting July first. And so he will take over for the July board meeting. So at that meeting, then you as a board, if that's, you will make that decision, so. I just wanted to draw that to your attention.
I have one additional question, Julie. So on page twenty-two, Dave, the very last bullet really talks about cooperative work, where six-foot social distancing cannot happen. Could you explain what that might mean when you say cooperative type of work?
Yeah.
And the fact that you would then require masks for that piece of it?
I think that, and Mike, probably we can discuss it now because that's the next agenda item.
Okay.
But so I don't know if you would want to, because I thinking that there's a little bit of flexibility that Mike and I are just, we're talking about. So I don't know if you want to wait. So Julie, it would be the recommendation for optional masks starting tomorrow through summer school, which ends July thirtieth.
Yeah, go ahead, Shelley.
I'll make the motion to approve the optional mask wearing for students effective tomorrow through the end of summer school, twenty twenty-one.
And that includes staff and.
Yes, student, staff, and visitors, correct. Thank you.
Motion made by Shelley, seconded by Lori to approve the optional mask wearing for students, staff, and visitors effective June seventeenth through the end of summer school, twenty twenty-one, all in favor?
Julie, before you make that final, ask for a final vote, I think there was some discussion that, did we, no, okay, so June seventeenth, okay.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, approve of covid protocols for summer school, twenty twenty-one?
Okay, on page twenty-two is the covid protocols that we are recommending for summer school. We've already talked about the first couple of bullet points regarding quarantines, and again, I will ask Tammy to give more information on the specifics of that, but again, recommending a seven and ten-day versus the fourteen days. So the bullet points, summer school with cohorts, I'm going to ask Mike to talk to the next bullet points because he will be running the summer school. Mike?
Yeah, so we set it up a little bit differently by grade level. Each kid's going to get a math experience, a reading experience, and an enrichment experience, so we're going to go by grade level. And the classrooms are set up basically social distance already, so we thought that would be a good thing to continue, seemed to work. Hand sanitizer stuff is in the rooms. That really wasn't changing anything. Since the kids will be in the, in the classrooms themselves, the amount of cleaning will be done at the end of the day, so that really doesn't change. So that really doesn't change anything. And just really the last bullet there for cooperative groups, it was more designed for conversation amongst the board, just to say, you know. And the thinking behind it is you're pulling, we want to do group work. We want to do small group work. We want kids reading to kids. We want adult or teenage mentors who are going to be helping out. We want them reading to our kids and doing math things with that. Brings yourself within that six foot distance. Our youngest learners are not able to be vaccinated, so there's that conflict of there's, you know, they're still contagious. And then quarantining, does it end up being the whole class or what, you know, kind of plays out? So, you know, I, I think the idea was behind it was just, this is something that's, we want to occur. We just want to do it right and do it safely. And if, I think the optional phrasing, you know, if I had my teachers say, hey, you're going to be within the six foot distance, you guys want to, if you want to put a mask on or something, this would be the time to do it, that kind of thing, as opposed to put your mask on or, you know, I don't know. I just, I was coming into tonight's meeting, I was very curious about what dialogue we would have regarding this, this scenario. So I'm curious what you think.
So you're looking at it more of a, if you want to put a mask on, this would be the time to do it, not mandating you have to put it on?
Yeah, that, well, I, I think, you know, it goes, I think through the discussion, it went both ways. The kids have been really, I mean, they've been great, really, they have been. So do I want them to have masks on? I do not. But nonetheless, trying to, you know, they don't have the ability if they want to be vaccinated. And some of their parents are, are, I'm, you know, trying to deal with all kids, not just, you know.
I look at it as, you know, you have the cohorts there, which is good, and they're going to be staying there for the summer.
Yep.
That would be the time to, you know, I mean, not throw it completely out, but basically relax it, see what happens. I mean, to say if you want to wear a mask, yeah, now would be the time to do it. But I would really not want it to be mandated that. I mean, if, especially if you're talking to our youngest learners, they're coming into a reading situation. You want that there without masks would be the best thing.
Yeah, I'd like to see them be able to keep it optional so that they can have that opportunity to, as some of the parents said before, see that enunciation, see the teacher's face if the teacher happens to be reading to them. You know, my personal opinion is to keep it optional and let the kid and the kid's parent choose.
Well, I, I think where that came from was from Tracy. That wasn't something that we brought up in our meeting. She had brought up if they're within groups, that was her recommendation. So I just wanted to clarify that, that wasn't, that wasn't ours at the time. We were going.
You're, you're saying Tracy recommended if they were in closer, like a circle?
She said she'd like to see it, but, you know, wasn't adamant about that. It comes down to the kids not being able, access to that vaccine thing. So they don't really have a choice at this point in time yet. And, and that's, I mean, with, okay, let's just back up a second because the sixth and seventh grade summer school students have had access to a vaccine if they want to. So I believe this says pre-K five.
Pre-K five.
So clarify on that. And, and that's, Rick's right, that was the driving force behind the conversation. It was just a conversation and all points already made are valid.
Yeah, I just, I go with that nice to have versus need to have. And if we're going to test it in any way, shape or form, since there is a smaller group of kids in summer school, to me, it's a good test for what could then potentially happen in September. So that's just my opinion.
So that last bullet point right now, mask wearing will be required. Can we change that to optional?
Up to you.
I guess I would like to change it to optional.
I would too.
Yeah.
Is there anybody in a disagreement with that?
I'm okay with that. Does this require a motion?
We need this recommendation? On that piece?
Yes.
Okay. On the protocols or just on that specific?
The whole protocol.
With that? Okay, okay.
With the amendment, I'm sorry.
Yep, that's okay. I just wanted to.
Amendment.
Make sure it's doing the right thing. I will make a motion to approve the recommendations on the protocols for summer school with the amendment that wearing masks for the pre-K through five and collaborative work is optional and not required.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Lori, seconded by Shelley to approve the COVID protocols for summer school, twenty twenty-one, with the amended amendment as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Great, thank you. Okay, use of outside groups, use of facilities for outside groups.
Thanks, Julie. In, on page twenty-four of your packet and is our recommendation for June sixteenth. By the way, if you look below are the recommendations that were made at previous meetings because we had agreed that every month there would be discussion about outside groups' use of facilities. So our recommendation for June sixteenth would be to allow outside groups that have Bangor students to use outdoor facilities. What we mean by that is, for example, we've been approached by a, I'm going to use the word AAU softball group that one of our parents is coaching. It has, I'm not sure the number of Bangor kids, but there are other students on that AAU, similar to AAU basketball. So we feel that because it's outside facility, because it does involve Bangor students, because previously we had limited to the groups just Bangor students, they couldn't have. But we feel again, with the trends and things improving, that we would allow those groups to have us use outdoor facilities. I am not sure, Rick or Mike, can you give other examples of other, I just gave AAU softball, and I don't even know if that's the right term, so.
That's the only request we've received so far from anybody with, for outside groups.
And again, it's our school groups are Bangor groups that have priority. But again, Rick is the one that runs facility use, he and Gene, of course. And so we would prioritize based on that, so.
So I will make a motion to update our outside group use of facility guidelines to include outside groups for outdoor facilities.
A second.
Motion made by Joni, seconded by Lisa, to approve the use of facilities to outside groups. The updates as stated, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. All right, next we have the approval of facilities for the high school or the high school girls' summer basketball league.
Thanks, Julie. So as you're aware, over the last three months, there's been a lot of discussion about the girl's summer basketball league. And originally it started with us hosting it, but then UWL basically running, running it, providing supervision, as you remember at the last board meeting, that fell through that UWL would not be doing that. So we still want to provide the girls with an opportunity for summer league. Merlin has reached, did reach out to other schools. That didn't come to fruition. He thought he could get some of the teams that were close possibly, but that did not work out. So what he is asking for permission is simply to use five Tuesday nights, and I think what had happened somewhere towards the end of June, once tournaments are over, that our current players, and then he would invite alumni in to practice against, play against, et cetera, et cetera. So the only, and I, we're in favor of that. The only stipulation we just asked is that obviously he has an attendance roster for each Tuesday night. So if there would happen to be a positive case or symptoms, you know, we could contact Trace. But, you know, it's, it's giving the girls the opportunity. And I know that the, he said the alumni are excited to, to come in and, and work out and, and play with the high school girls. So we are recommending that for summer.
We need to approve that, correct? We need approval.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the facility use for the high school girls' summer basketball program for the five Tuesday nights.
A second.
Motion made by Lori, seconded by Lisa, to approve the facility use for high school girls' summer basketball league program on Tuesday nights. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Next, we have the Neola policies, first reading. Or no, this is the, to approve the board policies that are not new, they are the ones that are revised.
So on pages twenty-seven through thirty-five is what's called an overview. This is what we receive from Neola, and it basically gives a short synopsis of what they are recommending in terms of revisions. And then also, as Joni said, some of them are required by statute. Some of them are highly recommended to be consistent with either law or policy or language. So those are listed in that format on those pages. So we'd need a motion to approve those, please.
Can you refresh my memory? Can we do a blanket approval or do we need to approve each one?
No, no, it's a blanket approval and, and the way.
Blanket for the revisions or the revised.
And the way I do that, whoever makes the motion is just simply say, make a motion to approve the revisions as listed in the board information.
Well, I obviously saw them up close and personal. So before I make a motion, I just want to make sure nobody has questions.
Many were definitions, some word usage for clarity. Some of them stemmed just some more clarity with some events that I think happened within this last year or two.
And probably, you know, for Lisa's, I just give a little background information. Lisa, this Neola is a policy service that the district has had for a number of years. This is my ninth and final year, but it was before that. And what they do, they have a policy team of lawyers and everything that recommends based on what's happening nationwide, statewide, even down to municipality levels for revision or if new policies, if there's new things happening, either at a state or a federal level, they recommend new policies, which there's a couple of them that are listed.
If we didn't have Neola, we'd have to be writing these and finding these. So it's a well-valued service. And they give recommendations. And as Dave said, some don't always apply, which they may apply to Milwaukee, but they don't apply to Bangor. And some may apply to Bangor that don't apply to Milwaukee, just for an example. And these policies can all be found on our website.
Yes. And David will become very familiar with this process. And it's a fun process, right, policy committee?
Right. I would like to move to approve the listed Neola board policies with revisions.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Joni, seconded by Shelley, to approve the Neola revised policies as listed in our board packet, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have a approval of a first reading of board policy two-two-six-one dash zero-three and two-three-seven-zero. And those are on page thirty-six, thirty-six and thirty-seven.
And continues through.
And thirty-eight. And thirty-nine. And forty.
And forty.
Thirty-five through thirty-six through forty.
So the policy twenty-two sixty-one oh-three is district and school report card. Again, a new policy, and it deals with Title One, which is a federal program. And we have reporting requirements both at the state and federal level. So this language just brings those in line. And it says, this, okay, these are the things that need to be reported out in terms of, of the report card. We, our state report card is much more robust than the federal one. And but the, there is, federal ones have been released, so to say, but they, they're not nearly, and I use the word robust as, as the state. So, so that is the first one. And then the second policy on page thirty-nine, educational options provided by the district. This is a, a district-specific policy because while there are a lot of options provided that are common to all school districts, you know, such as early college credit programs, start college, now program. There are some differences when you get down to virtual academies. There are differences that private schools from community to community. So this, this, the, that's specific to the Bangor school district, so. And again, you would bring this back for a second reading at your July board meeting.
Between now and then, you can read it again and ask about it if you have any questions.
So I would make a motion to approve the first reading of policy two-two-six-one point zero-three dash one as well as policy two-three-seven-oh dash one, both first readings.
Second. Motion by Joni, seconded by Lori, to approve the first reading of the board policies listed, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. All right, correspondence.
Julie, I have just a short thank you card from one of our retirees that was recognized at our year-end luncheon. And so I just wanted to pass it around. I, I do want to point out that it was a bus driver that, and he did say, I will truly miss you guys, but I'm not coming back. Sorry, David. So when you're recruiting, you know.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, CISA four report. We had our annual meeting on June second at CISA in West Salem. John Ashley was our, from WASBA, was our guest speaker, and he actually came face to face. We haven't seen anything face to face at CISA for a while, so that was nice. He just really reviewed what's been going on in Wisconsin with our public schools, what's going on in, you know, with hopefully post-pandemic. It was, he was, it was great, very enthusiastic. I was up for reelection. I did get reelected. And I was also elected as the treasurer for CISA four at this current, this next year. Other than that, it was mostly John Ashley was the meat of the meeting. So if anyone has any questions, they can let me know. All right, next, administrative report, school psychologist report, Mr. Chaplin.
Thanks, Julie. For those who don't know, I was late because we had softball here. They unfortunately did lose ten to seven, so. So the first thing on there is a year on special education enrollment. So in October, we do an official count, and that was at fifty-eight students in special education, and as well as fifteen students on a five oh four plan. At the end of the year here, we had sixty-four total students receiving special education services. Three graduated, ten new special education students, one currently private school student. Three students moved during the year. That should save the sixty-four, not seventy-two on that one. Six students were dismissed from special education. Again, that should be sixty-four, not seventy-two. One student, parent revoked consent for special education, so they were no longer in special education. Eight students were found not eligible for special education services, and some of those were dismissed from special education. And then as far as our five oh four plan students, four students were found needing a new five oh four plan. New five oh four plan, fifteen were continuing. So we have a total of nine. New five-oh-four plan, fifteen were continuing. So we have a total of nineteen students on a five-oh-four plan. And then two students with five-oh-four plans graduated. Any questions on our enrollment in special education or five-oh-four plans? Nope. Next one, please approve the hire of a part-time, long-term sub for speech and language pathologist. I, Vicky Brett, it was someone that we are recommending for the speech and language pathologist job at this point. I did have in the narrative that she only wants to do part-time, which leads into the second one, but again, asking for approval of Vicky Barrett as long-term sub for speech and language.
I'll make the motion to approve Vicky Barrett as the long-term sub for speech and language pathologist.
Second. Motion by Shelley, seconded by Joni to approve the hire of part-time, long-term, subspeak and language pathologist, Vicky Barrett. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And then the next one, the approval of part-time special education teacher slash speech and language intern. Andrea Elvin is someone who is going back to get her master's degree to become a speech and language pathologist. And hopefully, we can she could be a potential candidate in the future, if it would work out for the, both the district and her. No guarantee on that, but having someone as, someone that could be in the district and because Vicky is only going to be part-time, there is still a full-time need for services. We would probably rewrite some of the IEPs to reflect Vicky being the speech and language pathologist, and then the speech and language intern or special ed teacher being able to supplement some of those things. So that is what we are planning to do with the program for the coming year, unless, you know, signed by some magic, some, some speech and language person just comes out of the woodwork and wants a, wants the job, so.
So do we continue posting that position, or what is, I mean, obviously, they're not going to come out of the woodwork if we're not asking. So I was just curious.
Yeah, we, what we do, Joni, is, is you, when you put on, it's a service call weekend, you can put, it stays on there if you do it until filled. So we would leave it on there. Like Josh said, I just don't see that happening. And again, these two actions are necessitated because there's such an extreme shortage of speech and language people in the schools. So.
And if you recall, when, when a person goes for a speech and language pathology, where we are not just competing for those students that are graduating, the hospitals, private care, things like that. So if you have a program, say at UW O'Clare, that puts out twelve students, half of those are going, and probably more to hospitals or private practice things. So-
And I suspect there's other openings in the state.
Last time I looked, I haven't, I haven't looked recently, but in our region, there was like six openings. So yeah.
So I will make a motion to approve the hire of part-time special education teacher slash speech and language intern Andrea Elvin.
Second. Motion made by Joni, seconded by Lori to approve the hire of part-time special education teacher slash speech and language intern Andrea Elvin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Last things here are informational things. So the Wisconsin Council of Administrators or Special Services recognizes individuals in different regions. For some reason, they're just called regions, but they correlate with the Cisas. And Kari B. Ornstedt was named the Outstanding Speech and Language Pathologist in our CISA, as well as Nancy Rathell, the outstanding related service provider for our region. And as you know, both of those are retiring this year. The Forward Exam and ACT Aspire and ACT were closed, and we should be getting the results of that. We do have some of the results in for some of those, but some will be coming in over the summer. We had a little bit of a downtick in participation due to parent opt-out because of COVID. But we still did meet the ninety-five percent overall participation rate, and that's, that's for all testing. So it's not just Forward Exam by itself or ACT. It's, it's all, all testing. So hopefully, looking forward to looking at the data on that. And then the last thing is the Cardinal Hall of Distinction. Again, we established just a few years ago to help promote people that have served in the Bangor community or alumni and things like that. So hopefully, we can have the ceremony in conjunction with Homecoming Week. And David, I didn't know, I don't know if Dave told you, but you have to be the master of ceremonies for that unless you can coax Dave to come back to do that, but. So-
Give me a heads up, David.
So again, deadline for nominations for that is the end of July.
Any questions from, are you finished, Mr. Chaplin? I'm sorry.
I, I I can keep talking if you want.
Any questions for Mr. Chaplin? Okay, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Julie. I'm asking the board to approve the transfer of Michelle Lorenz from four, part-time 4K to our second grade position. Sorry, I forgot to put her last name on there.
Can I make a motion to move the remainder of the hires to closed session?
Sure. You seconded?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made by Joni, seconded by Lisa to move the rest of the hires to closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So we will move down to Summer School Update.
Yeah, hall staffing is pretty much complete. I'm waiting on one candidate for a position, but I think I'm good there. And-
You have a list done in here?
Yep.
Correct.
They're all in the consent agenda. And then protocols have been kind of discussed. Questioning is in place and schedule is set. So it looks like we'll be ready to go on July twelfth.
Do we need to approve the hire of the summer school teachers? Is that under consent? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And then, so earlier in the, it was a month or two ago, I can't remember. Board approved allowing me to use S R three funds to hire a full-time math interventionist at the elementary school. If you remember, Michelle Lorenz was our part-time 4K teacher. Did a similar job to that on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And it was not full-time for her. But based on the fact that if she's moving to second grade, and I have to now find a part-time 4K, I'm asking the board if you would consider allowing me some flexibility with that interventionist position. Not necessarily what I'm hoping for, but in order to get a candidate for the part-time 4K position, if I can connect part-time interventionists with it, I might be able to get a candidate. And, and if, so based on trends, and this is basically information that's out there in the general public, is the push for 4K to be full-time. You know, it would surprise me greatly if in the next three years, that 4K was not mandated for full-time. I'll guarantee on that. But what that does allow is if this person takes the 4K position, we get a quality candidate into the 4K position, part-time math interventionist, then if it becomes mandatory, let's say, and changes in our community even are going that route, that person would then move into that. There are other positions that are probably going to open as well in the district. So, you know, it's, I think it's a win for the person if, if in fact they would consider it. So I'm just asking the board to consider allowing me some of that freedom to, to do that.
And only the portion that is attributed to the interventionist is S R or?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, because Michelle's position was a normal position.
Okay, okay.
And we did, you know, it's not exactly what you provided me in, to look for, but we did have substantial success with the setup we created in Michelle's presence, and we can do better. Even that, you know, I think we can do better. Even it's limiting, it still would probably focus on those primary grades, K two. And I, and that would be my hope for that. I just want to know your opinion is.
In the math intervention position, that's loss of learning. So S R three is perfect there. And then our 4K is in our budget.
Yeah.
Our time right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So-
It just allows me to-
Some flexibility of finding a full-time hire.
Finding a quality candidate.
Well, the shortage of teachers, I think we need to be creative right now. And if that's going to offer some flexibility, I think we should give Mike the ability to do that.
So can we approve that right now for him to have that flexibility, or do you want to take that to closed as well?
Oh, that's not, yeah, that, that's fine. It can be.
Okay.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to give Mike flexibility in finding that position for the 4K and math interventionist.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Lori, seconded by Shelley to approve to, for Mike to have that flexibility to offer a position of a combination of the math interventionalist and the part-time 4K position. Did I state that correctly? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Mullenberg.
Thank you, Julie. First up, I have asking for approval for the resignation of middle high school family and consumer science teacher Molly Hunt.
What happens if we don't approve it?
What'd you say, Joni?
What happens if we don't?
I'd love to have her back.
I know.
Just try that, Joni, see what happens.
Yeah, I'll try it. I'll move to approve the resignation of Molly Hunt.
I reluctantly second.
Motion by Joni, seconded by Lori to approve the resignation of family and consumer education teacher Molly Hunt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Two and three, Rick, will move.
So all those will go to closed as well?
Yes.
Stodion.
Okay.
Head coach, all the-
Yeah, I would like the head coach, football coach to work closely.
So down to six.
All right. Asking for approval, paternity leave request for Rick Beerbauer in the fall. His wife is due in August.
Move to approve.
Second.
Who did that? Joni first?
Joni, and then Shelley.
Motion by Joni, seconded by Shelley to approve the paternity leave request for middle high school teacher Rick Beerbauer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have one of the things that we found out this year, what we're really lacking, when we, when the Virtual Academy CRVA happened, was that we really didn't have much for attendance policies. And a lot of schools around, I talked to them, we just, it's a new situation that we had. So when students were falling behind, all the protocols were put in place, calls were made. I made several calls, the teachers made calls, emails were made, everything else. And when you couldn't get them up to speed if they weren't logging in, we just didn't have any recourse for that. So talking with colleagues, and I looked on the DPI site, I really took it from there. And also West Salem, I worked with Deanna Wyatt, their curriculum director. And so that's where we came up with, and Hannah Schultz and I came up with basically, if students are not making adequate progress, there is a pacing guide for those classes that they have. And typically, what happens is I can see all their login times, if they're logging in at all. If they're not logging in, when they're not, I'm calling parents. And for most, it worked, but there's a handful that didn't, and they're very credit deficient. So looking to, if that's the case, require a meeting with me and the family. And if that doesn't rectify it, that the students would have to come back to physical school. So and then also the habitual truancy in there as well, that hopefully, we'd never have to use that. But we didn't have anything in there. This is not for the virtual, like if our school was to go virtual, it's not that. That's, that's a whole separate policy approved in the spring or last year. This is just for what'll be called now Burn, Bangor Virtual Academy. The difference is Holman, West Salem, and us, we shared teachers, and we did that. We had kids in all those classes. But now the state said that we have to have different sections. We can do everything the exact same, but there'd be a Bangor section, a West Salem section, a Holman section. So we have to call it, it's not CRVA anymore, even though it's the exact same thing, but we just, it's the way we categorize the students. It's a state-level thing on that. But that policy basically just gives us a way to get kids here so we can help them be successful, if the online stuff just isn't successful for them. And then also, in there also, and this was Deanna from West Salem said the same thing, but we could deny enrollment into the academy if they're not making adequate progress towards graduation. So I had a couple of students this year who are credit deficient, that if they would want to enroll in the fall, they're credit deficient, being in the academy, I would deny them based on that, just because it didn't work. And I don't want them to get further behind. And, and then on WVS, Wisconsin Virtual or Edgenuity, those are, those are classes that we have, some online classes. And one of the things that, it's kind of the same thing, maintain adequate progress. And we can also look at all of theirs, but we also didn't have anything in there for athletics. So those are semester-long classes. So a student basically could be doing nothing until the end, which we had a few, and then try to catch up at the end and remain eligible the whole time, where we're tying it to the quarter, just like our grades are here for our athletic code, and fifty percent of the coursework must be done to a passing level. So that's what we put in there. And then I'm hoping also that with those checks in there, to get them to come back if they have to, we can catch some of those kids if it's not working for them. Some felt it was working well. I talked to some parents, and they said, oh, it's working great. And I said, well, you know, your, your child's highest grade is a nineteen percent. This is, I mean, it's not, you know, I mean, and so I just felt helpless. One family in particular, I called every day for three months. And it's frustrating to see kids struggle and for it not working to them. So I just, I'm asking for approval of this so that we can better serve these kids and all that, and not let them fall through the cracks like that.
So we need approval.
Are these two separate, the attendance policy and the?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the virtual school attendance policy.
A second.
Motion made by Shelley, seconded by Lori to approve the virtual school attendance policy. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Lisa, sorry. Did I say Lori?
You said Lori.
Motion made by Shelley, seconded by Lisa to approve the virtual school attendance policy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. First time I did that. Thank you, Rick. Thank you. I know. Thank you for paying attention to that for the best outcome for our students.
Thank you. Next, number eight, approving the twenty-one, twenty-two Bangor Virtual Academy for grade seven through twelve. We had a, we had a healthy discussion about this, and part of it is just logistics, but also from the seventh grade on up, they're, they're just a little bit better at working on their own. So that's why, and I know Mike was going away from anything 4K through five as well. It's a recommendation that we have, if Dave's going to talk a little bit later about working out that memorandum of understanding, we have some work to do on that. But, and I'll be in a meeting with a couple of other schools on Tuesday for that one as well. But this is just to approve that Bangor Virtual Academy for those grades. We asked parents in the spring that were going if they'd be interested in the fall, and we had around seven or eight students at that time that said they would, they would possibly do that again. So it's definitely down. We had thirty-two this year that were in there.
So technicality, so we can't call it CRVA anymore?
It's not really true. The state, we're not a part of it has to be our own. West Salem is calling, there's the West Salem Virtual Academy, Holman Virtual Academy. It has to be our own. West Salem is calling, there's the West Salem Virtual Academy, Holman Virtual Academy. And they recommend.
One section per se, is that what?
The only reason I'm asking is the first reading of that policy distinctly calls it the Cooley Region.
Right, but we can amend that, Johnny.
I'm just saying, so before we do the second reading, let's.
Change it, right?
Correct. And the other thing is, when I talk about those sections, so we had um, like a West Salem teacher would, would teach English, for instance. They had students from Holman, West Salem and Bangor in their classes. They would still do the same thing. But it would be section one, section two, section three. So not, nothing will change with that. It's, it's more because of the state regulation.
Sure.
So they just can't be mixed classes because they're not open enrolled.
So, thank you, Rick. I wanna, just before we approve this, um, Mike, so for the elementary, did you talk parents or?
Yeah, we called every parent and sent everybody coming back.
And they want their kids back face to face?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I just wanted to clarify.
Yep. And of ours, it was, I guess, at about six to eight, but half of them were, they said maybe.
Sure, sure.
So I counted those in.
Okay, great. Thank you. So.
So I will move to approve um, that we provide virtual academy for grades seven through twelve um, through the coming school year.
I'll second that.
Motion by Joni, seconded by Shelley, to approve the twenty one, twenty two Bangor Virtual Academy for grade seven through twelve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'm excited to uh, ask for approval for a field trip for the FFA State Convention. Um, I talked to Mr. Beerbauer uh, last week and then this week again, there are five students that are, that are gonna be going, parents sign waivers and um, he did send me, um, I know in the packet it has the tentative schedule in there for the conference, but he also sent me the protocols for the Excel Center where they're gonna be at. Everything that's, or the Alliance Energy Center, everything that they're doing. Um, they have a lot of things in place. I mean, I can, I can definitely send that to you, but I felt very strongly after reading that, that they're, they're doing everything that they need to, and I'd love to see our kids have this opportunity. It's a it's a great opportunity that our kids go to every year. And I'm excited just to say, hey, can we go to a?
Yeah. Is this later? Did they like postpone this?
July, so I don't know any normally. It's next month.
Right. No, but I mean, was it previously in past years, earlier in the school year?
I think it was like in February.
Yeah, I think it was in the spring.
Yeah, I think it was like.
You know what? I'm glad they reinstated. That's great.
Yep.
That had to be, because they always came here to.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the um, FFA Convention attendance in July.
A second.
Motion made by Lori, seconded by Lisa, to approve the July twenty first FFA Convention attendance. By our, by five Bangor students, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, um, asking for approval of the twenty one, twenty two W I A A Senior Membership Renewal Application. And basically, there is no fee, but we have to renew each year in order to play in the tournament series. Each board has to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the W I A A membership renewal.
Second.
Motion made by Laurie, seconded by Joni, to approve the twenty one, twenty two W I A A Senior Membership Renewal. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Mullenberg? All right, Mr. Lane.
Thank you, Julie. Uh, number one, open enrollment alternative apps. We, we don't have any for June because actually the uh, alternative apps, um, there's a little bit of a hiatus in the summer. So actually you can start with the alternative app. And, and again, just a reminder, the board, alternative apps are ones that can be done at any time during the school year. That's different from what we just approved in May. Uh, May was for the regular open enrollment period from February uh, through the end of April. And those are new students that are wishing to come into our district or to go out. So there are no alternative apps. Um, I do want to clarify a little bit because I think it is a little bit confusing. Um, so last month, when you approved the um, applications, open enrollment in and out. Uh, what I explained is that out of the approximately thirty applications that were going out, the vast majority of those were for kids, number one, twenty five out of the thirty had never set foot in our district. Um, a lot of those are four K types of things. And to Mike's point about, you know, at some point, if you're to offer full time four K, I think you would see substantially less of those types of O E's for four K because it's, it comes down to childcare. Um, so uh, as I said, majority are, are for those students. And, and as I said, other students had never set foot in our district that happened to move during the year. And uh, you know, and, and if they've have a connection to their former district, you know, if they've been attending for a number of years, I certainly understand why they want to um, continue in those schools. So again, I just wanted to um, point out the difference on that. Um, also, I, I do want to um, point out that uh, due to the hard work of our board and our staff. Um, nine years ago, when I first came, we were at between thirty five to forty more students that were going out than coming in. And that is a financial drain on the district because in today's dollars, uh, you know, I think it's around nine thousand now. So that means that um, if we would now have, I'll just round it up, forty students more that were going out and coming in. Um, we would be paying those districts about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So through the hard work of our district and our staff and our board, um, we are even. And that says a lot because one of the, excuse me, one of the things that changed was if you remember these open enrollment exceptions apps, what's happened during the year? That, that was a recent thing of about three, three, four years ago. And that's, it's very difficult from a budgeting standpoint. Uh, Angie and I, when we do the budget, we use historical figures to do that. But you know, you're doing the best you can and estimating that you don't know what the situation is during the year. So I, I just want to again commend the hard work of our staff and our board. Um, because that's heavy lifting uh, in terms of uh, putting those numbers. Because we, we have a lot of good schools around the area and uh, um, and especially we're nestled in among much bigger schools that sometimes can offer um, other opportunities that we may not as a small school, but I still believe in the power of a small school. And I think a lot of people do. And so hopefully that will continue going forward because um, there is Bangor pride. This is a great place to send your kids. So. So, thanks, Julie. Um, number two, uh, prove the hire of pre K twelve library media director. We recommend Lindsay Peyton for that position. Lindsay was um, chosen over two other applicants. Um, and so we're recommending her hire as pre K twelve library media director.
I'll make a motion to approve Lindsay.
A second.
Motion made by Lori, seconded by Lisa, to approve the hire of pre K through twelve library media director. Lindsay Peyton, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next, asking for approval of the twenty one, twenty two food service contract with West Salem. Uh, reminder that we've had this uh, for the last ten years. Um, we buy twenty percent of the food service director's contract from West Salem. And then she provides services to our district and there's a list in your packet of what um, they provide. It's been a great partnership. And uh, so we're recommending the approval of that for food service contract um, with West Salem for twenty one.
And Dave on this, on page seventy, is that our portion of the salary?
Yeah, salary and benefits.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two food service contract with West Salem.
Second.
Motion made by Shelley, seconded by Joni, to approve the twenty one, twenty two food, food service contract with West Salem. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, number four, I'm asking you to table, Rick alluded to this. I'm a member of memorandum, well, standing for Cooley Region Virtual Academy. Um, uh, the memorandum of understanding um, is uh, the fiscal part. And uh, last year, La Crosse was the fiscal agent. Um, a, a lot of it was done, uh, and they did a tremendous job, all the schools in offering a virtual academy. But um, there's some costing that we need to get clarified um, with this memorandum of understanding. So as Rick said, there is a meeting next week. And uh, we're hoping to come out of that with an under, more of an understanding of that, okay, if we're part of that uh, CRVA, um, that the costing is much more um, exact. Um, because, a- again, because of the unbelievable numbers that did join, and I'm not just talking Bangor, the five districts, I think there was a couple thousand kids. Um, uh, that some of the costing, we need to make sure of a little more uh, concretely before we recommend approval of M O U. And, and that would, once we get that information, we'd bring it back uh, to you at the July board meeting.
All right. Any questions for Dave? Your number thought, you got a number five, Dave?
Yeah, um, I thank you. Um, as all of you know, this is my last uh, board meeting as superintendent. And I just want to say thank you to this board. Uh, I guess it wasn't the, the exact board that hired me nine years ago. Um, but it's been an absolute honor to work with you. It's been an honor to work with the administration team that I work with. It's been an honor to work with uh, uh, office staff that um, that uh, just does such a tremendous job. It's been an honor to work with a devoted staff. Um, pre K twelve. Uh, and you know, I, I really believe we're doing some great things and I believe that uh, I think you hit a home run hiring David and you, you can pay me later, David. Um, but uh, you know, I, I'm just excited, obviously, to move on to the next stage of my life, but um, I'm excited to watch um, what this district will do. Because I, again, I think we've done some really good things. I'm so proud of, of it and everything. So um, but I'm gonna be watching from, not really afar, I'll be up the hill. Um, but you know, still coming to games, all of those things. But I just think that uh, there's so many, this is such a great community. I want to say thank you to this community who's over and over and over supported referendums, supported this school. And I know this last year and a half has been, it's, it's been a pain in the butt. And uh, um, I'm hoping we move beyond that and heal in the sense of you know, get back to educating our kids uh, um, and uh, in person, face to face, all of that. So I just want to say thank you and uh, I wish uh, the district the best of luck in the coming years. So.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, David.
Lori, go ahead.
Dave, I just want to say thank you. Dave and I started at the same time. I started nine years ago. We both didn't know what we signed up for, but it worked out okay. Um, I just want to thank you for all you've brought to the district with some of the new ideas, the way you've pushed us with P L Cs. I remember going to P L C training um, with you guys up in the cities. Um, didn't really know what it was, but um, we were gonna bring it back. And I was so fortunate to see your staff in action and you in action there. Um, you've brought things to another level. It may be a hard act to follow. Um, but we know where to find you too. So um, best of luck to you. Um, you've really done a lot for the district. This last year has been difficult. Um, but I'd like us to dwell on all the successes rather than some of the opportunities maybe that we had to deal with during the last year.
Thank you.
Yes, Dave, and um, I will continue to celebrate you. Thank you for your leadership in the district, your perseverance for making Bangor the best place to learn, the best place to work, the best place to be. It all makes a difference in our students and their outcomes. I truly believe that. I see that. So thank you. I also um, have some more celebrations I want to mention. We completed a successful school year. And I want to thank the students, our families, our parents in a very difficult year. For your perseverance, for our administrators, our teachers, our support staff, our bus drivers. All of you made a difference for our students and um, we completed it successfully. I also want to put my um, tip my hat for the people, Mr. Mullenberg and anyone else who made our graduation a success. Um, it really went off without a hitch. The weather did cooperate. I was a little worried when it was getting really cloudy, but it was a cool day out. Um, it was a, a very nice celebration here out on our field. John Ashley reminded us at CISA four, um, June second, that not everyone in the state had face to face graduations. And everyone at CISA four did, and he was like shocked. He said, you're kidding. That did not happen in the state of Wisconsin. So we are very fortunate and I didn't uh, realize that either. I also want to recognize baseball, how'd they do? What? I want to recognize the baseball, the softball teams, the track and field teams who are still working to progress. They too, this has been a delayed season for them and they persevered. And you know what? They're out of school and they're still here playing and working hard. And I um, I commend them for that. And I think that's because of the adult leaders that they're working with makes all the difference. I also want to recognize the Bangor School District, who's been recognized by the Department of Public Instruction and the R T I Center with a bronze level of success, building a school wide um, equitable, multi-leveled system of support aimed at closing those gaps in reading and behavior. We always are talking about those gaps in reading and behavior, and we've been awarded a bronze medal or a bronze um, level. That is something to celebrate. And we know from research that that improves student outcomes. So hats off to our administrators, our teachers, everyone who had a part in that, our students who work hard, our families and parents who support our students to work hard. That is uh, that's something to be recognized. That's all I have. Anybody else?
I have one, Julie. Following up on graduation, I'd like to celebrate the help I had from John Magnuson for getting the stage and sound and everything set up that worked. I thought it worked out really well. Mike Stang and his crew for setting up all the chairs. And the graduates for uh, doing their thing. That was awesome. School board members that were there and helped present. And then also all the parents that, that attended. It was, I thought it was a great day. I was worried about the interstate noise. It really didn't come into play. Um, and for the first time on a Sunday afternoon, no trains went through. So that all worked out, but it wa, it was a great day. I would love to do it outside again if we can.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, um, so removal of items from the consent agenda.
I want to take the consent agenda into closed session as well.
Uh, need to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to take the consent agenda into closed session.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Shell, or Lori, seconded by Shelley, to take the consent agenda into closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. All right, I think that ends, so I.
I'll make a motion to move into closed session.
I'll second.
Motion made by Lori, seconded by Lisa. We'll do a roll call vote, starting with Lisa.
Aye.
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 We are now in closed session. Thank you.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Joni, seconded by Lori. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. We're recommending Kelly Lothenberg for a second grade position.
So moved.
Second.
Was that Joni?
Yes.
Motion by Shelley, seconded by Joni. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Recommendation for Andrew Cook for high school English teacher.
So moved.
Second. Lori or Lisa?
Yeah.
Motion by Joni, seconded by Lisa. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Custodian for the middle high school, Brenda Langer.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shelley, seconded by Joni. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Head football coach, Todd Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shelley, seconded by Joni. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Co-curricular approvals for the middle high school.
I'll make a motion to approve the co-curriculars.
Second.
Motion made by Lori, seconded by Lisa. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Approval for summer school staff and support staff.
Move to approve? I'll second.
Motion by Joni, seconded by Lori. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Approval contract increase from seventy-five percent to seventy-seven point five percent for Tara Jamboy for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. All in favor? Or excuse me, I need a motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Lori, seconded by Shelley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Prove the hire of Paul Lacson.
So moved.
Well, motion to hire him as a part-time athletic director.
Yeah. He never finished it, yeah.
Yeah. Lori, are you a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Motion by, motion made by Shelley, seconded by Joni to approve hire of Paul Lacson as athletic director for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Approve the twenty-one to twenty-twenty-three contract for Michael Johnson, elementary principal.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Lori, seconded by Joni. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Approve the twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three, two, twenty-twenty-three contract for Rick Mullenberg, middle high school principal.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shelley, seconded by Joni. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Did we miss anything? Alright, I asked for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Motion made by Lori, seconded by Lisa to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thanks everyone.